Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Waterville Planning Board meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the October 28th meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Did we have a second?
We did.
I'm sorry?
Me.
Item number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts with the items we're going to be discussing tonight?
I'll recite my conflict with the Rusty Lantern market. I have a conflict. The seller is a relative of mine, plus I'm also in a butter.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the next item is the Rusty Lantern Convenience Store. First Priority Capital LLC is requesting final plan review for a Rusty Lantern Convenience Store to be constructed at 222 Main Street.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Neufeld. I am with Priority Real Estate Group, which is the umbrella organization over First Priority With me tonight is Brandon Cummings, who's our Vice President of Construction, and he'll be seeing the project through that face. Just want to introduce ourselves. I think I did this for the board last time, but for the benefit of folks in the audience. Priority Real Estate Group is a main company. I think a lot of times folks might see an Irving store and think we're coming from away, and we are as about as main as we can get. As a matter of fact, our president, Jim Howard, grew up here in Waterville and has us go to Bowley's for franks every time we're up here. But we're operating out of Topsom now. Rusty Lantern Markets operates out of Brunswick, Maine, right across the bridge. And we're up a couple more. We've got about 35 stores now. This, I think, would make 36. We've got stores throughout Maine and New Hampshire. And since the beginning of 2003, we've been using this new model that you'll see today. It's called our Gen Two. It's actually won a national award for people who give awards to convenience stores for its new layout. We have one, nearest one's probably West Paris, maybe Livermore Falls. There's one up in Bethel, if anybody goes up that way. We're just starting construction next week, or maybe the week after that, in Gorham, New Hampshire. We use Maine-based builders from all around, Carmel Electric, Samar and Sons, LaJoy Brothers, are mostly down in our area, Bob Miles for concrete, K.R. Uland does our site work. The whole point is that we are as main as we can be, and if Maine had a refinery, we'd spell sell moose gas or what have you. So we do try to become part of the community. We're fairly philanthropic. We like to give away $100,000 a year to charities, winter kids, big brothers, big sisters. So just want folks to know we're not the dreaded from away. This site would be, combined, the three parcels, would be 1.22 acres. We're going to maintain most of our existing entrances, and we'll close the ones on Main Street we don't need. You're going to see more about the store coming up. We have regular and diesel fueling locations, and we'll talk about that landscape and lighting coming up. The owner of the property and my boss, Jim Howard, has done what we could to meet with all the tenants of the parcels. We're working on getting the professional offices relocated to one of the owner's land. I'm blanking on his name right now.
Bill.
Bill. Bill Mitchell. Thank you. This project requires a DEP permit by rule and a Maine DOT traffic permit, and we have already obtained both of those, so no conditions related to that. Project location at the corner of North and Main Street. You can see there's three existing structures there that will have to come down to make room for the new project. The survey calls those out. You can see the three structures, and there's a freestanding barn behind them. There's a fair amount of pavement already on site. The plan is to, the store will back up to the intersection with the parking and pumps kind of behind it, to the side of it. Again, we'll have one entrance fullway on Main Street and one on North Street. The canopy will have three pumps, so total of fixed fueling stations. All of the stores now have a nice indoor seating area with a patio. We'll provide sidewalk connections to all the streets. This is just the drainage plan. Often folks want to discuss how the drainage works. We're going to have onsite catch basins. We'll have four or five catch basins here that'll go out and connect to an existing structure in North Street. We reviewed these with the Public Works Director. Fortunately, this is a fairly deep structure, so we can go right into it. We'll use existing water services from Main Street, and once we find out exactly where it is, we should be able to reutilize the existing sewer line for the service. It will have a grease trap installed as well. I'm sorry, that's going to come out here on this side of the building into North Street. We have developed a landscape plan to meet the ordinance requirements for the business and the buffering requirements to the neighbor. As we discussed last time, we're going to have a full wall of arborvitae trees planted down this side to buffer between the residential uses and our use. So those will grow up much higher than the fence option. We'll have some flowering oramel trees out on the streets, along with quite a few planting beds that'll have a variety of shrubs and grasses that are displayed over here. This is just a look over to the neighbor Pleasant Crossing. Coming at that. I always want to call it corners. They already have some nice mature landscaping on their side with a pedestrian connection that we'll maintain, and we'll do what we can to just simply supplement that to maintain that good, strong buffer. Oh, there, decided to go. Let me back up. We have a lighting plan in the packet that is all full cutoff LED fixtures, are dark sky compliant, and we have designed it so that there'll be no light trespass at the property lines except for where we have a little bit right at the entrance, which the Department of Transportation usually likes to see sunlight at the entrances for safety. This is a picture of some of the existing structures, buildings that we have to give you a sense of what this is going to look like. You can see the outdoor patio area gets used into late in the season because there's an indoor-outdoor fireplace that is constructed as part of this, with this tower. Man, I'm sorry about your keyboard's a little sticky tonight. And we worked with Maine DOT as with the part of our traffic movement permit. We're going to be adding and making better signage out here. We're going to add crosswalks with contemporary signage. These walk sign with a down arrow will be on both sides at both ends of the crosswalks. We're going to replace the stop sign with a 36-inch stop sign to get better visibility on that. And there will be a center turn lane constructed for much of the street coming away from the five-point intersection. We'll start right about here at our project, and that continues north on this plan, all the way up to the railroad tracks, basically. And there'll be another mid-block crossing for pedestrians there. And it doesn't show on this plan, but there's also going to be a new crosswalk with signs at the intersection of Pleasant and North. This would be, this store is actually going to be mirrored from all the other stores that we've done, just because it fits better in the corner. But it gives you a sense of the appearance and the materials, the outdoor seating area with the connections to the sidewalks. That's one in Turner, was one of our first stores with this design. Instead of doing a railing around the parking, to separate the patio from the parking, they do planter boxes, which, again, they can modify for the holiday season. They, you can see in this picture, they have the fireplace out back, and they have, some of the tables are designed so they can have little fires up close. Try to make it as much of a year-round place to not just stop in and grab a thing of milk, but sit down and eat something if you're doing that. You can see on the right here, they have a full kitchen. You can do to order foods, and they have a large variety of ready-to-take-with-you foods. And then this is the inside of that tower with the fireplace. They have a couple nice wingback chairs you want to sit with your laptop, and then they have some stools and tables available. Come on, buddy. There we go. That's the gist of it. I'd be happy to answer questions from the public or the board.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody from the board have any questions?
Well, I did want to just verify something about parking. Oh, I'm sorry.
Your mic.
About parking. It looks like there's probably plenty of parking, and you guys would know, but I was just curious, at your busiest shift, how many employees do you think would be in the building or, you know, between the gas pumps in the building that might be parking there as well?
Yeah, typically, they have four or five onsite on, I'm not thinking of it, at work in any given day. They are open 24/7, so they would rotate through, so they probably have about 15 employees in total, but only about five.
Yeah, maximum. Mm-hmm. Okay.
And we do tend to find these stores have a very good food business. So yes, we do have a lot of parking, but we found that they often do get full or near capacity, and it's always good to have a few extra spaces for when the snow claims a few of those.
Thank you.
Other questions? Nobody else? I'm guessing your busiest time is probably around lunchtime?
Yep, for food services.
For your parking spots getting filled up. I'm imagining you're probably-
Yeah, but they do a good breakfast crowd, too.
Yep.
We are very popular with the trades.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yep. This site, we don't have a lot of opportunities for folks that tow trailers, like, you know, I think Asplin Truck with a chipper on the back, or landscapers.
Yeah, yeah.
This is going to be, I think, more popular with the neighborhood nearby.
Yep.
But yeah.
And you saw the condition about the construction traffic not using Main Street?
Yep.
I just want to clarify, is, do you feel that the intent of that is also the demolition?
Oh, yes.
Traffic would not use Main Street?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We will put barrels across that until, you know, we have to go back and pave it.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't want to mess with that.
Yep. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Anybody from the public? Any comments?
I would like to-
Yep, please come up.
Good evening.
And could you just state your name for the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
My name is Catherine Carson Gabriel, and I am a resident and a commercial tenant in one of the buildings that is to be demolished. I leased the entire building at 220 Main. So the building that you saw down at the lower part? Oh, that would be great. Thank you. Yeah. The lower building, I leased the entire building. That was a big investment for me. I am the founder and owner of Ten Forward LLC, Programs for Families and Communities. I would like to say that I am a big fan of Irving's and Rusty Lantern in general. Over the last five years, I have, on average, spent at least $1,500 a year at Irving's and Rusty Lantern because my work has taken me statewide. I rely on the quality of Irving's when I had to work late at night in a residential up in Ellsworth and drive to Farmington. I could rely on Irving's. I also, however, knew that late nights at Irving's and Rusty Lantern can be difficult. So I do want to address that matter first in a moment, but what I want to say about 220 Main Street, which is right next to 222 Main Street, is that, excuse me, I'm very nervous. I live in a beautiful white house. It is surrounded by an Americana white porch. You've probably all seen it. There's an American flag out front. I fly the American flag every day. I am moving. I will miss this location. It took a lot for me to get there. I was located, Ten Forward LLC was located at 69 Sewell Street in Augusta for five years, almost five years before I moved up here. My background is in children's services and also development. I have grant-writing background in development and fundraising. I've been an adult ed teacher, so I really kind of run the gamut. I am saddened that the city will allow the demolition of a beautiful house and two houses next to it, including 220 Main, what might be an historic building, and the big yellow house on the corner that houses Paramount Behavioral Services. I am aware respectfully that the planning board cannot veto anything that is already kind of all set zoning-wise, but I would like to address some of these issues, if I may, if for no other reason to ask you to please consider some of these matters in the future. Okay. I moved my residence there in the fall of last year because I wanted to build the business, and I had been driving so much. I provide behavioral services for families and work extensively with children and families, especially children with autism, ADHD, or behavioral challenges. We are a real contribution to the community. During COVID, I had started the business after about 12 years working in the field as a supervisor and with my past development experience. I was one of the few Section 28 providers to stay open throughout COVID and to survive COVID. We really struggled financially. We were not considered essential workers. So I made a personal sacrifice, and at the time, I was living in Farmington, and I drove twice a week to Ellsworth to work in a residential to support the growth of my program. On the other days, I drove from Farmington through Augusta to the Rusty Lanterns there and down to Damariscotta and back again because a Department of Health and Human Services person had said that if I personally did not work with the child in Damariscotta, they would abandon the case. That child and his brother were later permanently adopted in a family, and I'm very happy about that. So demolition. Moving into that space was a big sacrifice. I personally moved most of the apartment pieces myself. The deal with Mr. Mitchell was that our lease would start on April 1st of this past year. I had no awareness at that time that there would be a possible purchase. The conversation with Mr. Mitchell was that we would give it a year. If it worked out well, I'd be looking at a five- to 10-year lease. It is a beautiful building inside. He did a beautiful job with renovation. The ceilings and the offices are beautiful. They're 1,400 square feet in the back, and I have 1,000 square feet in the front for the apartment that is entirely separate. Ten Forward is a licensed mental health organization, and we're contracted providers with the State of Maine to provide Section 28 rehabilitative and community services for children with cognitive disabilities and functional limitations. We serve people in Waterville and the area. The location at 220 Main is ideal for this business and is welcoming to the community, and we have started activity programs on Saturdays where we're practicing some inclusion to help the kids just get to know people in general. It's very supportive. I learned about the project and the sale of the property and planned to build an Irving's and Rusty Lantern here about a month ago. To that date, I had not been informed of it by Mr. Mitchell. I am getting ready to move out. I emailed Mr. Mitchell today that that is my plan because that is what he offered. The spaces that he has offered me are not satisfactory for me for a variety of reasons, so I'm looking elsewhere. I plan to stay in Waterville. My concern is that while there may be currently no zoning issue or permission issue that can concern the planning board, I hope that you will overall consider zoning that will protect our beautiful homes and consider the balance of commerce and residential. I must say I have my doubts about the Department of Transportation's approval for the traffic flow. Anybody who drives south on Main Street at various times during the day knows how congested that can be. When I was driving home the other day, I was on the highway off Route 130, exit 130, and I saw two signs, one for Sitco and one for Shell, which is way up on KMD. Those were the signs at the exit 130. I would anticipate that within a short period of time, we will see a sign from the highway that says Rusty Lantern Irving's. That means trucks will be getting off, turning right onto Main Street, pass Sitco, say, let's go to Rusty Lantern, they have good sandwiches. I know, I agree. They will turn right into Rusty Lantern, and then they will either decide to turn right and go to the hotel for the night, taking their trucks through town, or they will turn left and go back onto the highway at exit 130. Either way, if the trucks are turning left, you can imagine the potential congestion even with a middle lane installed. My other concern is that I live almost just a hop and a skip from the fire department. I am extremely thankful for both the police and fire of Waterville. I think they do a fabulous job. When I hear those fire engines pull out at various times of the day and night, I'm always thankful that they can kind of maneuver through. My question is, when you've got diesel being sold at a Rusty Lantern and trucks off the highway, what kind of traffic are the firefighters going to be encountering? You know, so, and I really wonder whether that has been carefully looked at. The other, the other thing about this is I wish I had been asked. You know, I could have brought up some of these concerns six months ago. You know, I was told that there was a non-disclosure agreement. My answer to that is this: why? Why would there be a non-disclosure agreement and something so secretive for so long so that by the time it's announced, it is one and done? To me, that is a disservice to the people around the town who also care about the community. I think Mr. Mitchell is an upstanding citizen, and he certainly provides beautiful residential and commercial spaces. There's no doubt about that. But he is not the only quality citizen of Waterville. By the way, I have been a customer of Irving's for almost 30 years. So I did a little math, and in about 2021, which was my kind of biggest commute year, I made 287 gas station stops. Of those, approximately 36% were Irving's and Rusty Lantern. I almost always stop and buy a snack or a cup of coffee. So I anticipate, I estimate that over the years, I have spent between $30,000 and $40,000 at Irving's. Okay. Should I have been notified sooner or other tenants? Should a commercial tenant be notified because of the kind of shifting that I'm going to have to do, you know, and distraction from my business? Should citizens be asked about traffic flow because citizens see it every day? Have all the considerations of these beautiful homes been considered for their cultural and historical importance? Again, I think 222 Main was built in 1889. It's a beautiful brick house. Have we considered how more traffic is going to impact our fire rescue? I said that. Going forward, will the planning board consider where Waterville is headed in the future? My personal dream, honestly, when I was in that house, I would look at the entrance, that northern entrance to Waterville where it says, "Welcome to Waterville." It is so beautiful, and it's potentially even much more beautiful. I wonder if the planning board is thinking, and would encourage you to think about, what's the Rusty Lantern going to bring? You know, and it, will it be great modernization? Will all the houses from Rusty Lantern to Route 130 be torn down? Is that what we're seeing? My concern about that, I think, is valid because those three houses are among the nicest on all of Main Street up until you get to the mall. So if we're, if you're tearing down three of the best houses on Main Street, what's going to happen with the others? Finally, I just, I know there's controversy about what happens when gas stations and places like Rusty Lantern, you know, come in. Some people will say, well, there's an increase in employment. Some people will say there's an increase in commerce, a nice place to have breakfast. Those things are all probably true. But I used to punch out at Kids' Peace in Ellsworth at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, and I would drive into wherever it was, on the way to Bethel, right before I got on the highway, and I would stop at Irving's. And I can tell you that at 10:30 and 11 o'clock for a 24-hour gas station, a lady has to be careful. Okay? Finally, I would say that in general, the location of 220 Main is near a lot of residents who are partially housed or do not have adequate mental health treatment. I frequently hear people yelling, singing, screaming outside my window. I recently had to call the police because someone was threatening someone else. So something needs to be done about that area in general in terms of helping those people or managing. We have a lady who regularly panhandles at all of the parking lots up and down that street. You know, she'll spend half an hour at Canibec Eye Care, going from window to window, asking for money. So what are we doing? You know, and is there a long-term plan? And what will the Rusty Lantern, how will that fit in? I can find a place. We're looking at a place now. I can find a place to live. It will be separate from where I work, but that's fine. That was originally the plan. But I do want to share and with one thing, which is the dream for me was that 220 Main, the apartment, would be vacated- the apartment, would be vacated within a year and that would become a memory center, that it would be an adult education, adult and community education type of hub where I could work with all generations, especially older people, and help them build skills to help them kind of hone their memories as they get older. I thought a house setting would be good for that. That dream is now very much on hold. It will happen somehow, somewhere, but it won't happen apparently there. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I'll say thank you very much for coming and speaking. There may be questions, so you might need to stand back up and thank you for providing the services that you do. I'm very familiar with those types of services. And I'll also say, you know, it's always disappointing when we lose housing, when we lose buildings, especially nice-looking buildings. And I would encourage you to go speak with city council and your city councilor, reach out to the mayor. They would be the ones that would initiate steps to prevent things like this from happening in the future.
I see. Okay, thank you.
But yeah, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Tom?
I don't think you were nervous at all. You were well-prepared.
Thank you.
You've raised some very significant issues. First off, I do agree with you. First of all, I can communicate, I can discuss, I cannot vote, I will not be voting in this matter. The buildings that are being suggested to be demolished add substantial beauty to the city, no question about it. Bill Mitchell has done a wonderful job with that corner. In order to make it as appealing as it is now, if it were to be torn down, is to replace it with the same type of building to add that beauty. So when you say, "What is it we're doing?" I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you. Is there someone here from the Historical Society?
Yes.
That building, the brick building that was built in 1889, I don't know if it's in the Historic Register, but I do know that it was part of the Kobe College complex at one time, either the President's House or it was used for something, but it's been around forever. So I mean, I'm not here to address that, I was just curious. And the other matter is, I'm not, I am a lawyer and I'm a former judge, but I'm not here to give any legal opinions. But you signed a lease with Mr. Mitchell?
Mm-hmm.
And that lease was executed when?
Well, there were actually two leases.
Tell me about the latest lease.
Well, there were two separate leases, commercial and residential. There is no longer a residential lease, it's month-to-month, which the lease ended September 30th. The commercial lease started April 1st and expires March 31st, 2026.
And are there any options for you to renew?
There are, no, he's told me that...
I understand what he told you. Have you given your lease to a lawyer to review?
No.
Are there any options in there? Does it say that you have the option to renew for another three years, five years, two years, one year?
I have to check that, sir. Yeah, I don't know.
Because as my last research in the state of Maine, new or succeeding owners must honor leases. So if you had a 10-year lease, you're there for 10 years, you understand?
Right.
Regardless of, there's a new owner.
Right.
So I don't know how much we can do, but you, if I were you, I probably would have someone take a look at the lease.
Okay.
And see if there's something in there at all.
All right.
I will say that when I was working in Augusta, I went to the Rusty Lantern almost every noon time. It's a great place. That's why I want that on the record also. But good luck to you.
Thank you.
I'll just add a comment, please. No offense, Tom, but the planning board is not giving you legal advice.
I'm not giving...
I know, I know.
I hear that.
They're just going to double down on it, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just want a second. Their comments, I am happy to hear that you're staying in Waterville and, you know, appreciate everything that you are doing with your business and for the community, so...
There anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this item? No? I will entertain a motion to go through the, or no, I don't need to do a motion to go through the findings and facts, right? We just go through them?
Excuse me, can I just say a couple of things about that?
Sure.
It's obviously an uncomfortable position to be having to dislocate businesses and people and we tend not to do that. I would say that we did a lot of thought and due diligence on it. We checked historical districts, we looked at the house. Some of these houses, which have been around a long time, don't really, they're not eligible for historic if they've been altered, changed the windows to modern windows, metal roofs, add additions and some of that. And we looked into that. And I would like to say, if you have any issues with your relocations, we'd be happy to hear from you. You know, like I said, Jim Howard, he's a Waterville resident, he has a heart in this place and we would reach out to anybody who's being dislocated, you know, have to relocate if they're not getting good facilities from Bill Mitchell, then maybe we could help. But we did look at that. There are nice houses in the middle of an area which has become largely commercial. We're between Ball Greens, the Optometrist, and Kennebec Savings and the other side. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we did consider those aspects and it's a shame if it's a very nice house, which I believe it must be, but it's kind of what happens in our line of work. So if you have any questions for us about that, we'd be happy to answer it too.
I mean, not that it really matters, I, and I'm sure Tom remembers much further back than I do. I remember when that whole area was residential before the bank was built, right? Were those, were those buildings actually listed for sale? I'm just curious.
I don't know.
They were not? They were not? So, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, we can move on to findings and facts. Do you have a copy? Oh, you're going to need to stand up again, sorry. Yeah?
I have one.
Great. We're going to go through, I'm going to ask you a bunch of questions.
Okay.
All right. Number one, the development will not result in undue water or air pollution on or off-site. And you just answer true or false to all of these.
Okay. True.
Number two, sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of the development, including but not limited to potable water and fire control water? Number three, the development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water?
True.
The development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to use of the highways or public roads existing or proposed, both on and off-site?
True.
Number five, the development will provide for adequate solid waste disposal?
True.
Number six, the development will not cause an unreasonable burden on the ability of the municipality to dispose of sewage?
True.
Number seven, the development will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, or rare and irreplaceable natural areas or any public rights for physical or visual access to shoreline?
True.
Number eight, the development is in conformance with zoning?
True.
Number nine, the developer has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the above-stated standards?
True.
And there are a number of conditions from the fire department, who reviewed everything, from the city engineer, from the sewer system, I'm sure from the Kennebec Water District, from, well, that's probably, and some from us. Are there any other conditions that anybody wants to add to this? Not hearing any. Under the construction traffic, right now, it does say that the Main Street entrance shall not be used for construction. I would like to propose that we just add the words "used for construction and/or demolition."
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion to make that amendment?
Second.
All those in favor? And can I get a motion to approve the findings and facts?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
And all those in favor? Thank you.
Did I miss it? You all done?
What's that?
Did you approve it while I stepped away?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your help.
Yeah, thank you. The next item on the agenda is Standard Properties LLC is requesting final plan review for a four-unit multifamily development to be constructed at 49 Drummond Avenue.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Allen from A.G. Hudson Engineers and I'll grab my drawings here.
Sure.
So this is the same site we looked at last month with a few minor changes that have been the result of the review by the fire department. I guess it's on the other drawing. And back at that time, we had some additional parking that was in this area along the back building. We, we discussed potentially taking that out and I was reluctant to and it turns out it was good, I didn't, because the fire department wanted to make sure that they had someplace to turn around a vehicle in there. They won't be able to turn around a full-size truck, but they could turn around an ambulance or a smaller truck to be able to provide services to, you know, an ambulance service could back in there and they would be within 50 feet of the doorways of all of the units. So that was their largest concern and so we, by converting this to a non-parking space, it'll be labeled as a fire lane, people hopefully will not park in there and the ambulance would be able to back in and take someone out if they need to. One other change that I did just become aware of this evening, Mrs. Beveridge told me, the city engineer was concerned about tracking out onto Drummond Avenue. And so we had talked in the past about putting in a construction entrance here off of Drummond. The construction entrance is just temporary while they're building it. It's like coarse stone, it'll knock any mud or anything off the tires and that's a standard thing to do. But the new thing on us tonight was the city engineer had asked for the front 50 feet, 50 feet back from Drummond Avenue to be paved. The rest of the area was just going to be stone dust and so with that condition that we paved the first 50 feet, I have not had a chance to speak with the developer. He may decide to pave the entire thing. That does make it easier to mark pavement and so I'll discuss that with him. But certainly, we would not be opposed to doing this front 50 feet, which would go back probably about to here, I would guess, somewhere like that. So that was, that's the only significant change we've had on the plan was just the parking space conversion to fire lane and the new pavement.
Jeff, is the pavement, is that part of the construction, during the construction, with the stone dust and the gravel or is that the permanent pavement?
That would be permanent pavement. Yeah, the intent of, the original intent of the developer was to just use a stone dust base. It's a little more economical than paving. It does require some more maintenance that paving would not, so there's a trade-off whether you pay upfront or you pay over time. So if you're paving the front 50 feet, it may make sense, but again, that's, that will be his decision, but I'd be happy to go along with that, paving the 50 feet anyway. And that's listed as a condition of approval on the driveway section. Other than that, there have been no changes. It's still going to be two duplex units. The total square footage of both buildings is 3,000 square feet, so each building would be about 1,500 square feet and each apartment would be 750 square feet. So they're small, two-bedroom units, two-bedroom, one-bath units, single floor, but they fit a definite need, so.
All right.
That's all I have.
Any questions from anyone on the board? I do have a question. So the fire lane, so that's, the intent is to not have that paved?
As I said, we weren't planning on paving anything at all and so we would need to install a sign, I don't know where my mouse went, right in here somewhere?
Right.
That indicates that that is, you know, those first two spaces, which won't be marked on the ground, are to be left for, left open. So someone, you know, maybe, it'll also be convenient if somebody's moving in or moving out, they can park right there while they're in transition.
Anybody from the public? Come on up.
Good. My name is Brian Poole, I live at 47 Drummond. First of all, can somebody tell me what stone dust is?
It's just crushed concrete that would be packed, as it gets wet, it packs down and becomes light concrete.
Okay, this is not a big dust builder for the neighbors across the street or next to us?
Or next door, no.
Okay, all right, that's my start. Now, there's a lot of trees on that lot, a lot of them that are down because a lot of things are going to have to go. What is the plan for taking care of the trees that are there? I mean, are we going to lose everything that belongs to those lots?
Most of the trees will have to come down because we have the driveway and we'd have where the buildings are going. There'll be some areas out on the end of the lot, down toward your house and toward the other house on the far side.
Okay, we're here.
You're here. So this area down on the bottom, we'd want to retain some trees there because there's a little bit of a hill. We can't do anything with that hill.
Yeah, it's a deep hill. It's about 25 feet down.
Yeah.
Okay. Also, which is going to be on your land, is a huge oak that actually almost goes over our house but belongs to the property. If anything's going to be cut down, we would, we would like to see that go. It's, the tree's getting older and it's going to be like a $5,000 tree to take down, but it probably would have to go. What's going to be around the structures on the outside, will there be fencing to break up the properties from us to them?
We, we'd not intended to put any fencing because you have that big vertical difference. Is it 25-foot?
Yeah, roughly, but you're going to be doing some filling to bring that up a little bit, aren't you?
No.
Really?
No, we're building down at the bottom of it and cutting into that.
Okay. Now, you are aware of, we have one water problem. We lived just before you go and we have a sump pump that goes crazy there for two or three months a year. That there is a lot of water coming off the hill, whether you guys are aware of it or not, but it's there.
Yeah, these are just going to be slabs, slab foundation, not a basement.
All right. All right. Excuse me, I got my notes here. I thought I read somewhere that was going to be fencing. This is why I'm asking you about that.
Yeah, I don't believe so, no.
Can I address something city-wise with this, or can I? We have an awful lot of traffic on Drummond as it is now, so a few more buildings, there's going to be a little bit more traffic. I have been to the police department two or three times, talking about the traffic problem, wondering if you guys could take our advice, but maybe with Mitchell School being right across the way, if we could have some signs put up, it's a school zone or something to that effect, that maybe start slowing stuff down, or a lighted speed sign, or all the good stuff. Traffic is really happy there. This is going to increase it by, well, there's two cars per family, the 12, 14 cars, whatever it is, comes out too.
Yep.
Just something to consider, because traffic is high, the school buses use that road, we have the entrance for Mitchell School, and we already have people think it's a racetrack, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, we can certainly have Ann pass those concerns on to the city engineer and code enforcement and...
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Poole. Anybody else from the public?
I have a question. So one of those houses is going on the road, roadway, is that right, on Drummond Avenue?
Yeah, sort of where the other houses are now.
Yep. And then the other house is going in the back?
Yes.
In back of somebody's house?
Yes.
There's not a lot of room back there? If you look at where the fence is, where the fence line is back there, I live on Columbia Road, I can see it from my house.
Okay.
There's not a lot of room back there.
There's, right now, this is all wat, open grass, because these folks here are able to use this now as, they mow it, and I think they use it maybe as their backyard. They've got a chicken coop on the corner of it here.
Yes, I, I see it.
Yep.
And it's not in that section of the property, it is in their section of the property, right?
No, this, the chicken coop is actually on, on our property, and they'll, they'll need to move it. This is the property line right here.
Mm-hmm.
And so the cook, chicken coop right here is sitting right, right on the property line, but on our side of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So even if they move the chicken coop a little bit, there's not a lot of space back there, and so...
There's enough, there's about 100 feet.
But like, you're dropping a house in the middle of everybody's backyard. There's no privacy left. There's traffic, there's...
People need a place to live.
There's plenty of housing in Waterville. So what kind of housing is this going to be? Low income?
No, their market rate, whatever, whoever can afford them, they're not low income, they're not, probably not going to be high-end, because they're small. So I think it's going to be like, you know, you or me.
Yeah, I can agree with the house on the street, because that's how the neighborhood is set up. But if you look at the neighborhood, nobody has a house plopped in the middle of all of everybody's backyard. That, that just takes away, I mean, that's going to drop the valuation of these houses, especially the one that it's sitting behind. It, that's not the way the neighborhood is set up.
Yeah. That's the only way that the, the most reasonable way that the developer could get to
Four houses in there.
To get four units in. Because it's, you know, I've been to the planning board many times, and I've heard that there's a great housing shortage. So this, you know, you do what you can to kind of fit.
There's all kinds of housing going up on Front Street. There'll be plenty of housing. I just don't...
Yeah, it's not there now. These can go up, these will be here next summer.
Joy.
Yeah, sorry. But, but I...
Yeah. No, that's the one part that I disagree with, is putting that house in the back, right in the middle of everybody's backyard. It leaves no privacy for anybody. But I don't make the rules.
Sorry, could we just get your name for the...
Yes, my name is Linda Janest, 40 Columbia Road in Waterville.
Thank you.
And that house will be right behind us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our lot, as you know, you come up the top of the hill, and you come in a good, maybe 15, 20 feet up to the flower boxes we have up there. Who is going to maintain that end? Who's going to maintain the hill to keep it like we have doing, I mean, like the trash that was hauled in there? We took out a trail load of trash, we moved in there. Who's going to maintain all that stuff that come up on the hill and cut grass? Is that going to take the, the, I don't think that covers it. I think we need to know that.
I would assume that the, and I don't know this for sure, but I would assume that the tenants, not the tenants, but the developer would be maintaining the lawns.
At least...
If there's, if there's trash in there, certainly he'd want to take that out.
Well, we took out tons of it, so we did you a favor, but that's okay.
Thank you.
Are these buildings, are these going to be rentals, or is this going to be sale?
Rentals.
They're going to be rentals, okay. I still think that we should consider possibly all the way across the board here, fencing to separate one thing to another, whether they're going to have dogs, cats, whatever, that's going to come over the hill, or whatever, who knows, but just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sydney McLean. I have the pleasure of being the owner of 51 Drummond Ave., with my husband, who's sitting in the back. We are the house that will have this duplex in our backyard. So the chicken coop having to move five feet, we'll move it five feet, whatever we have to do. But our bedroom has a big sliding glass window, and right now, we open that every morning, and we see grass and trees, and we have privacy. In the future, apparently next summer, we will see somebody else's house, two somebody else's houses. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with Standard Property LLC, Standard Management Company, whatever they go by. But I have done my own research, and as one of the biggest property management companies in this area in Waterville, they don't have the greatest track record. The reviews online are mixed, but if you look at the reviews of this company and the management that manages their properties, the bad reviews are tenants, and they say that they go around and they buy up properties in Waterville, and they kick people out of their homes. And then the good reviews are property owners just looking to make money. So I think saying that Waterville needs more housing, true, but I think we all just listen to people discuss tearing down housing. So why are we building, again, I agree with you, that the house facing the street and on the street, not a problem. That's how everything is set up in the neighborhood. But building a property right behind our house disrupts, I mean, I'm being selfish and saying it's going to disrupt me, but it's also going to disrupt everybody else. You're not just affecting two neighbors, you're affecting six, seven, eight of us. And you're removing everything that separates those properties and gives any of us any sort of privacy. My main concern with this is that these properties, being as small as they are, are most likely going to end up being short-term rentals, six-month leases, one-month leases, month-to-month leases. And it's going to be high turnover. And you have these residents that have been here for years, that are living in these houses, that none of these houses around us are rentals. I think maybe there's one across the street, but it's still a single-family rental, and those people have been there for years. So you're taking this residential neighborhood, single-family homes with people that have been there for many years, and you're just throwing in these small rental properties for the purpose of density and income. And I understand, most of you probably don't live on Drummond Avenue, so you don't care. It's all about money for the city, and I understand that. But please just try to understand that there are real people being significantly impacted by this. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will say, I certainly sympathize with everybody. You know, unfortunately, one of the big things is, you know, do these projects conform with current zoning, right? The property owners are not asking for any changes to the zoning of the parcel. So if, if the project does conform with zoning and meets all of the requirements of the, of the findings and facts, there's, we really don't have any ability to not approve projects like this. So. Is there anybody else from the public?
Do you have a...
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me first say that you're not being selfish. If I were in your home and a change like that was being made, I would, I would be at that podium, and I would be saying the same things you're saying. Is it a, is it going to disrupt, disrupt your way of life, and your husband's way of life, and your family that you may have in the future? Sure it is. But as our chairperson said tonight, our task is to listen to the evidence, and, or the testimony, or the facts, and apply the law to it. In other words, what is being proposed? And is it in an area where it can be developed? And is it in conformity with everything? And if the answer is yes to all of that, we have to follow the law. And in following the law, I think each of us at this table will say, sometimes we will make a decision that we don't like. And if we didn't follow the law, what we would be called would be activists. And activists, judges or activists on panels, they don't stay around too long, because they're violating the law. So those that will be voting in favor of this tonight, I will be one of them. It's not something that I do with any joy. It's something that I have to do, pursue into the facts that were presented, and the ordinance and the laws that are on the books. But I don't know if that gives you any comfort, but I want you to know, inside, I feel as you do, and I appreciate you coming forward and letting us know. And young man, you've got yourself quite a wife there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom.
You're welcome.
You said it better than I did.
No, I didn't.
I wanted, I have a question, I guess, for, for all of us. I want to say, I sympathize too. I mean, it's a dilemma, and I, and I understand that we are bound to follow the codes as they're written at this time. It's not our job to change the codes. But I wonder if, if there is, if there are any provisions in a situation, close situation like this, where screening either by vegeta, planting vegetation along the boundary, the border, or fencing is recommended or required, I'm, I haven't seen a landscape plan, and maybe that's forthcoming, but I just would like to clarify that.
Typically, screening and buffering of some sort is used to separate dissimilar
Right.
Use of land uses.
Okay, and this is the same use.
And so this is, it's residential next door, it's residential here, it's a residential B-zone, so there's not any requirement to do that.
Mm-hmm, I see. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't have any part in this.
Yeah, no, 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 come on up.
Devin Hall, I'm speaking later tonight.
Yep.
So I have nothing to do with this, but I am kind of curious, in the sense of where they're saying like their backyard, I do feel for them, and not really for you. When it comes to like, them having their whole backyard, right, and they all have equal use to this land, right? This whole open area that they are discussing about, who owns that land at the moment? Or is that just like, free-use land for everyone's essentially in the backyard?
The developer owns...
And did he also own like, the buildings around them as well, or do they all own their own property? I'm assuming that...
Yeah, they would all, each own their own parcel of land with their...
So I guess, I do understand like, people needing apartments, needing things, but as discussed earlier, with the Rusty Lantern, I do find it kind of pointless. I think it's a great, you know, business and all, but you have another gas station that's, you know, I mean, within a .5-mile radius, you're going to have five gas stations, which is very unneeded, in my opinion, but I have nothing to do with that, obviously, either. But on their end, I do feel for them heavily on that. Is there, and you guys said you guys don't really choose on the sense of like, telling him, no, he can't do this. So for their sake, who would they go to to try to make it so he can't put two duplexes in there and just one? I also own plenty of properties and commercial as well.
Sure.
What he's doing, I wouldn't do.
I mean, again, if you're a property owner, you can do whatever you want
Hundred percent agree.
With your property, as long as you're following the laws
Fully agree.
That are in place, the zoning ordinances and stuff like that. So to answer your question, there's nobody that they could go to that would prevent
So it's just kind of like...
Somebody from doing something that they want with their own land.
So is there something where, let's just say, right, I don't know who owns, do you own the land yourself?
The developer does.
So like, let's say...
His company does.
So let's say, all the people that live around it, right, with, if they wanted all equally go in and buy that land from this guy, so he can't do that, unless he is willing to, that's obviously an option as well, right?
I mean...
If they all got together and wanted to do that themselves.
If they wanted to, absolutely. I mean, there's nothing that the city can do
Hundred percent agree, okay.
To prevent, I mean, that's a transaction between private parties.
How far along is this? Is this like, I don't know how many meetings he's come to already himself, but it's...
This is final site plan.
Okay, so after this meeting, it's essentially all approved and all said and done, right? So they wouldn't be able to probably purchase that land at that point, I'm guessing?
I, I mean, again, there's nothing that the city's doing to prevent private transactions from happening.
Fully get that. I just kind of want to get my piece out, because
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I feel for them heavily, and that kind of sucks. But I get that you guys probably feel for all of them too, and it's not in your position sadly, so I do understand that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I think we can move on to the findings and facts. And since I've read through all nine of these earlier, I am just going to read through them with the number only, unless anyone objects. Fantastic. You have a copy in front of you?
I do.
You've done this many times. So number one?
True.
Number two?
True.
Number three?
True.
Number four?
True.
Number five?
True.
Number six?
True.
Number seven?
True.
Number eight?
True.
And number nine?
True.
And as with the last item, there are a number of conditions that the fire department, that the water district, the sewer district, so on and so forth, city engineer have all listed. The developer is okay with all of those conditions?
Yes.
Is anybody, would, anybody from the board want to add any additional conditions? Okay. Any motions to approve the findings and facts?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Thank you. And all those in favor?
Sorry, the second was...
Patty.
Patty.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
And the next item is Mr. Hall. Devin Hall is requesting rezoning from Commercial A to Commercial B for 25 Elm Street.
Correct. I recently bought the 25 Elm Street property. That includes the old Firestone slash, became Handyman's Cleaning. So with the property, when I originally bought it, I wasn't, I was told... So with the property, when I originally bought it, I wasn't, I was told by everyone I bought it to that it can be a garage and everything's fine. It's already equipped with the lifts, air compressors, conveyor belts, 2,000 square feet of storage, probably 24, 25-ish parking spots. There's plenty of room there, but I guess the guy that owned it previously, he didn't, I guess, re-sign for the grandpa lease when he took over the building 20, 30-ish years ago, so he used it as a personal garage. So therefore, he never cared to, you know, have it converted then, which unfortunately, me being the buyer now, I'm dealing with that, which is understandable. But with that lot, I'm not able to do anything with the mechanic side of it, detailing, storage, like almost nothing really with it, which is very unfortunate, obviously. So I would, I'm hoping I can get it turned over to commercial B. On that same lot, I'm trying to really help like build the area myself. I'm putting a new laundromat into the Firestone building. You guys may have seen the construction, if you guys have driven by at some point in the last like four or so months. We're looking to hopefully be open the next month or two on the laundromat side of things. And on the other side, I have a behavioral specialist moving in and I have like a masseuse, an esthetician, things like that going on the other side of the building itself. That side's all fine, that's all good, I don't have to worry about that. But the garage is really why I'm here. So I'm just hoping that I can get the whole thing turned into commercial B or do, forget what I was told, there's another form of it where you can get it converted to where it's just for the mechanical uses. I'm fine either way personally. I'm just hoping that that's something I can reach towards.
Okay, great, thank you. And yeah, Anne explained a little bit, and Anne, correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, so the property was at one time what we would call legal non-conforming, and if the use of that goes more than a year without being used for that, it loses that status. So whether it was 10 years, or five years, or, you know, 13 months, it doesn't matter, it lost it.
Yeah, and that's even with him using it as a, because his company, Handyman's Cleaning, he had about 30, 40 vehicles being serviced out of that building all the time, but I do get it was his own like company, so he wasn't like, you know, bringing in other vehicles. I'm guessing that also counts as like canceling that essentially, right? Because he was.
Yeah, again, 12 months in a day, and there it is, right? I think they've been closed for longer than that.
Yeah, yeah, now it's only eight years.
Yeah, so, and right, there are two options, and obviously, we just make a recommendation to city council, right? You had to go there, I think, first before you came here, right? And so we can, we make a recommendation back to them, we can either recommend to go back to commercial B or we, can we recommend, Anne, a contract zone with conditions, or would they have to send it back to us for the contract zone with conditions request?
You can recommend a contract zone with conditions, but you'll have to create that memo that we've been required to recently.
Right.
So, yeah, that would take some time. We couldn't do that tonight.
And whatever we do, we send it back to the city council, they have to vote on it twice.
Yep.
If it's approved, then he has to come back for site plan review?
Correct, because service garages require site plan review with a planning board.
Okay. Which means we'd go through the findings and facts and all that.
Would you guys have anyone come look at the property or anything like that at all, or is it just me bringing the information board?
With site plan review, there's a number of people that go and review things, the city engineer, the fire department, the sewer district, water district, all have to sign off on it, so there would be a number of people.
Is that something that I would have to do myself, or would the town kind of be doing that and then inform me afterwards?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
When it comes to, I guess, all that stuff, like.
The site plan review.
The site plan review, is that something that I have to set up and have to call all those people myself?
Yeah, well, I can contact them for you, but you need to create a site plan.
Okay, okay. So I guess ideally then, based on from what I'm hearing, ideally, I'd like to go to commercial B if possible, so it speeds up the process a little bit, but that's just my thought personally.
Yeah, okay, great. Are any questions from anybody on the board?
I don't know if it's a question, but you purchased the property?
Yes, correct.
The long building and the garage?
Yes, correct.
And you want to have the garage go right back to what it was at one time?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I'm right across the street from you, my law office.
Okay, yeah.
And I was there when Gene Vayou ran Universal Tire, and they were busy.
Yep.
Very busy. And they never bothered us at all.
Okay.
The noise, compressors, nothing.
Okay, good to hear.
You're going to be busy, yeah.
I won't be the one working out of it, so whoever has it will probably be busy, which I guess would be good for them. That's what I'm hoping. I know I've had a lot of people interested in the detailing side for there, but I'm willing to go either way as well. I know that was one thing I wanted to figure out, is if the noise would be an annoyance for people. I know that they'd be closing, obviously not at late hours, so you wouldn't have to worry about anything in the nighttime, you know, any things going off, ideally.
Well, right, I mean, the city still has a noise ordinance.
Yeah, and I'm guessing they'll probably close probably around 6:00 or something like that, but I'm hoping, as you said, that you guys won't be able to hear anything and everything's nice and quiet. I've already updated a lot of the backyard too. I have sub pumps put in the back for water flow because the apartment behind the building, I think it was Greg Perkins or Mike Perkins, one of them owned that. Sadly, he was plowing all this.
Greg Perkins.
Yes, he was plowing all of his snow into the building for the last eight years. So it messed up basically the side of the foundation, it just kept flooding the basement, so I, as of today, it's now, the whole foundation's redone, sealed, sub pumps put around it, troughs underground as well, and all repaved too. So it will avoid any water going anywhere as well, and it will be good in that area too.
Yep, great. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I want to clarify. So you have, it sounds like you have some tenants lined up for the big building out front.
Correct.
And those are conforming to the A, commercial A.
Yes, correct.
Uses.
Yes.
Okay, and so this, so my question is, this contract zone that we're discussing tonight, would that be, would that be for the entire property or just for the section?
Well, as of right now, we're not, the contract zone, we can really make the contract zone say whatever we want, if we wanted to go that route.
Yeah, I see, okay.
So.
Okay.
Not whatever we want, but, yeah.
So, but, okay, so I guess I'll, let's see.
I think I'm going right.
So the request to change the zone to zone B, the commercial B, is that that would cover the entire property?
Correct.
I guess, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You could recommend to the council rezoning only the service garage building. That would be a way to, that would be a way to avoid having uses that maybe weren't as popular with the neighbors in your longer building.
Yeah, I know everything that's going in the longer building, I mean, it's, I didn't realize how many things are in commercial A, but you can almost put like a lot of, I mean, you guys obviously know, but like mostly any store can go into commercial A, so I feel like even if the whole property was commercial B, it's not like I'm, I get that you wouldn't know, I guess, but turning it into anything that would be in commercial B, the status of that at the moment, it will always, that building will always remain commercial A amenities in there, it won't be any other kind of guest in there that would be commercial B. My only question was if we did do it for just the garage, because right now, the whole property is just 25 Elm Street, would that become 25, like, you know, A, 25B? Or how would that work if that was to become a thing?
It wouldn't have to change the mailing address. I guess if you had a business in there, the business might want to have its own address, but the zoning wouldn't have any impact on that address.
Yep.
So I guess you're saying the whole property, ideally, commercial B.
Right. Anybody from the public? No? I will entertain anyone's motions that they want to make.
I would make the motion to refer this to council for rezoning to commercial B.
It was Tom that seconded.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Great.
Good luck, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. One last thing, though, with like, when it comes to like, for you guys, like, I know like the rusty lanterns and the things like that, I know you guys said you guys don't have the power, obviously, for that stuff, so when it comes to like someone creating like a rusty lantern place, let's say like where it is, which I guess is all businesses, so I get the idea of destroying the three because it's just three homes and then all businesses on that street. What would, I guess I thought there was a law to where you couldn't have a gas station so close to like another gas station, because isn't that mobile going to be like right behind that gas station? If I'm thinking of where the property lies, that's what I'm trying to think of.
I mean, for that item.
Remember like next to each other?
For that item, you know, we don't approve things like that, that's at the state level.
Okay, okay, so that's just like.
The main DEP, things like that, right? That's way out of our realm.
Mustn't weird for you guys trying to think about two gas stations next to each other for your own sake as well. I feel like, but obviously, that has nothing to do with you guys. I was just so surprised by the whole thing. I just found out about the rusty lantern like a week ago coming up, and I was like, where was this news? I was like, oh my.
When you say you guys, you're still referring to these two.
And ladies, true, true. You guys and ladies.
Everybody's a guy now and a dude, we're all dudes.
So sorry for that.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good luck. All right, the last item, Harris Property Services LLC is requesting site plan review to allow Fresh the Florist to open at 104 KMD.
Hi, I'm Jesse Rauel. I was the manager and head designer of KMD Florist for almost 20 years. Dave retired and closed the business the end of September. I rebranded as Fresh the Florist. I took the phone number, I took the customer base, the Google, all the things, and I'm looking to be at 104 KMD with Elmhurst Pottery Studio.
Great, thank you. And I'll just throw it out there, this property, I think everyone was here for Elmhurst Studio, but this is under a contract zone, so the planning board has to approve any changes to the business of what's happening in that building, so that's why we're here. Any questions from anyone on the board? Or Anne?
Yes. I witnessed a lady driving out onto KMD from the property, and there's a sign, when the pottery studio was approved, one of the conditions of approval was to put up a sign saying, no exit onto KMD. And there is a sign on the building, apparently. The director of.
There is.
Code enforcement of this code enforcement department, Dan Bradstreet, went there to check it out, and he said the sign is on the building, but it's not very visible. So he's recommending that there be a sign actually near the streets so people will be discouraged from coming out that way.
We can do that.
The conditions of approval for the pottery studio were that the one, the traffic must travel one way through the site, entering on KMD and exiting onto Sawyer Street, and the business owner must install a no-exit sign at the KMD end of the driveway. So it's on the building, and Dan Bradstreet is recommending there be another sign that's not on the building.
Okay.
More visible.
We can do that.
The other condition of approval for her was that she receive a sign permit from the code enforcement. Do you plan of a sign?
Yes.
Okay, so I would suggest the planning board consider the same conditions for his business, if that's okay with you.
It is.
Thanks, Anne. Anybody else? Anyone from the public? Okay. Anyone interested in making a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the revised site plan. Do we have to specify for, with the signage?
Would you like to say the language?
I think we could just make the motion to.
That's the language.
Okay. With the amended language, is that?
I think you could just say with the same conditions.
With the same conditions?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Great, all those in favor?
Okay, so.
So the motion was to approve with the same conditions as the July meeting, so. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to have a copy of that language?
Sure, that'd be fantastic.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone, and we do have some findings and facts.